I have to have anyone that changes line up here.
I'll hold her changing the lines.
Ready?
Yep, we're ready.
Regular meeting and Anderson County Board of Education will come to order. Scott, would you leave us a question?
We will, face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Barrett, will you?
I'll do the resolution. As you know, board, one of the things we do through U Trust is we recognize all of our people, all of our employees, and this month we are recognizing our special teachers, and I'd like to read the resolution. Anderson County Board of Education Resolution honoring and recognizing Anderson County schools' special teachers. Whereas our special teachers include art teachers, music teachers, PE teachers, technology teachers, special education teachers, speech teachers, school counselors, and librarians, they are a valuable asset for Anderson County schools. And whereas our special teachers are responsible for providing a variety of services to many students on a daily basis, and whereas this group of professionals is made up of dedicated and valuable individuals who play a large role in the success of students in Anderson County, and whereas these professionals help meet the unique needs of each student from teaching them life skills, exploring new gifts and talents, and making important decisions, and whereas the Anderson County Board of Education wishes to honor their commitment and service to the special teachers that the special teachers provide. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education hereby establishes March 11, 2021 a Special Teacher Appreciation Day in all Anderson County schools. And be it further resolved that the Board expresses appreciation and thanks to all who provide special services to our school system and students. We encourage each school and community to recognize these individuals for their role in the success of our school system, adopted wholeheartedly and unanimously by the elected Board of Education of Anderson County, Tennessee, in its meeting on this 11th day of March 2021.
Your motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Maybe second if we recognize the resolution, discussion. None, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Recognition of guest being none above and beyond awards.
Dr. Burrow, one of the things that the board had kind of not done for the last year was recognize our above and beyond award. We kind of put a lot of things on hold through COVID, and you all had told us that you really wanted to start this back up, so to try to get as many people recognized as we would have really in a whole school year, we'll be recognizing one person from every school and also from central office for the next three months. So we have, these names were given to us by the principals and our directors, and through U Trust, we will be sending them a $25 check. And so the people have been told they've got this award, but we really told them to watch on Channel 95 tonight as their names, so they can be recognized for the great job they've done, and this group has really went above and beyond.
Andy?
Okay, Andersonville Elementary School, Susan Johnman. Vocational School, ACCTC, Daphne Douglas. Anderson County High School, Matt Sloan.
From Clinton Elementary, Barbara Green. From Clinton High School, Jessica Jordan.
Claxton Elementary.
I'm sorry, Claxton, sorry, sorry. I just had CMS, so. Is this Claxton Middle also then?
No, no.
Clinton.
That's Clinton Middle, okay. Candace Watson.
Okay, I have from Clint River Community School, John Faust. And from Dutch Valley Elementary School, I have Susan Tipton.
And I have from Fairview Elementary School, Tina Arsenal. And from Grand Oaks, Allison Pack.
And I have from Lake City Elementary School, Amy Leach. And from Lake City Middle School, Andrea Livingston. And Norris Elementary School, Marty Bailey.
And I have from Norris Middle School, Ashley McInturf. From Norwood Middle School, Jada Jewett. And from preschool, Jamie Segal.
I have from Central Office, Catherine Price. Central Office, Kristy Fries. And OOT, Stuart Hicks.
Persons to be heard being none, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second approval of the agenda, discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Moving second approval of the consent agenda, discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Executive approval, again, we had none this month. Comments from the chair. Board retreat was held two weekends ago up at Museum of Appalachia. It was chaired by TSBA. I thought we had an excellent meeting. Part of the meeting was Director of Schools Evaluation. I'm happy to see Dr. Barrett barely passed. I think Teresa's gonna, are you gonna report on it, Teresa?
Yeah.
Under her. But I thought we had an excellent time, the food was good. I thought everything went extremely well. Have you heard anything back from the state?
No, have not. You should all have received a.
Evaluation.
Evaluation, yep.
That is all I have at this time. Comments from student board members.
All right, good evening. We have some great academic news this month out of Clinton High School. Our English staff met recently to review the item analysis results for the class of 2023's pre-ACT. Basically, that again just helps analyze, break down the scores, tell where the students need to improve, and it'll help gear our approach to preparing them for college better. Each department at our high school is gonna do this. They're going to improve ACT scores by improving the strategy for how to prepare for those questions in the classroom. Also, our Gear Up and Roan State Dual Enrollment Program received a U.S. Department of Education IES partnership grant yesterday to provide $3,000 in merchandise and service to CHS seniors preparing to attend Roan State. This Raider Ready event will occur in late April to prepare college-bound students for post-secondary work at Roan State, so very excited to prepare those Roan State students for their college journey. In other news, we had a very successful eighth grade night where the band was able to perform, the choir was able to perform, and organizations like HOSA Robotics and ROTC were able to show their programs to future freshmen. Course registration also opened for next year, and we're very excited to include brand-new dual enrollment AP and dual credit class at the high school. Also, great new music programs, so we're hoping this will grow our music programs, the opportunities for classes that students can take, and hopefully this will just make us a more well-rounded high school with more opportunities for our students. The last thing I have is a special shout-out to two students. One, sophomore Gracie Dejeanette, has been selected for the Tennessee Governor's School for Science and Engineering at UT this summer. This is where she'll get to take college-level classes in the field of science and engineering. And also Ashton Art Made All-State Choir, which is a very impressive musical achievement, so we're very happy for these students' achievements at Clinton High School. Thank you.
All right. So we recently announced our ACHS senior superlatives, and this year we had to add a little COVID twist to it, and we had two new categories. They were the most likely to cure COVID and quarantine king and queen, so we had to put a little new twist on this crazy year. I want to congratulate and recognize a few Mavericks who recently had some pretty big accomplishments. Swimmer à la coker made a qualifying state cut time in the 200 freestyle at the Short Course Championship in Nashville. Senior gymnast Mackenzie Wilson scored a perfect 10 on vault at the Warrior Classic this weekend. Sophomore Andrew Meyer won the Kentucky Beef Expo over the weekend, and Maverick wrestler Stone Cummins is a state champion. Okay, so since the guidance counselors aren't doing eighth-grade in-person meetings for Norris and Lake City Middle School, they made a video that they're gonna send out to the students and their parents. It's gonna inform them on updates and prepare them for high school and registering and all that. So although they're not doing the in-person meetings, they're still getting informed on all the stuff they need to know. And on top of that, the counselors are also preregistering current students for next year. That's the freshman, sophomore, and junior students, so getting a jumpstart on next year. So our counselors are on top of it. There's also been an ongoing trend of online students coming back for in-person learning, so that's a great thing. It's easier to learn on campus, you can interact with your teachers and fellow students, so that's a good trend that's going on, and that's thanks to you guys and your hard work and all the, you know, keeping up with the mask mandates and all that stuff. And lastly, I think I can speak for all of us when I say I'm ready for a spring break. We all need a week off after this. Nine weeks that we've had, we've done a great job, and we needed this week to get relaxed and rejuvenated for the final push, the EOCs and all the end-of-the-year stuff we got going on, so we got a lot to look forward to.
You're impressed, and we appreciate you all keeping us informed on what's going on at the high school. I forgot to mention during my report that what a successful vaccination day we had two Fridays ago at Anderson County High School. The nurses and Catherine and Greg, whoever put it together, did a tremendous job. We vaccinated 710 people within about a four or five-hour period, and it went so smooth it was frightening.
Greg has a, would like to say just a few words about that, if you don't care, Dr. Burrow.
No.
First of all, I want to give kudos to Catherine Price, our nurse manager, but I can't leave Anna Hurt out. Anna's our coordinated school health coordinator, and she was very instrumental in the planning of the process too. She also is a nurse by trade, you know, before she got into human resources and came to us as human resources, now she's transitioned to coordinated school health, and she does an outstanding job. But between her and Catherine, they make a good team, and they did a really, I kid, I tell everybody, all I am is Catherine's secretary, because all I do is I try to help her get the paperwork done and be a liaison with the Health Department. I don't know, because I'm assistant director, they listen to me a little bit more than they do her, but anyway, she and Anna did all the work. They deserve the credit for how that went. That was probably one of the most efficient things that I've been a part of in my whole educational career. It went off without a hitch. And the reason I asked Dr. Barrett to get up here was not necessarily to bela their efforts, but there's a gentleman in the audience tonight that played a big part in our success as well. Mr. Rick Turnbill with Walgreens, he has partnered with us over the years on many different projects, and he's partnered with Anderson County High School through their efforts, through the different quarterback clubs and the baseball and everything else, and he's just been such a wonderful asset for us here in the school system. And he and his company, and he told me, I'm not supposed to say this real loud, and I don't know why, he can't get the credit, Walgreens can't get the credit, but I think he still deserves it. They provided us with syringes and shock needles, PPP, water, and snacks for the nurses and the workers that were there, so I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank him for him and his company and what they did, and if y'all give him a little round of applause.
Yeah, I'm gonna say that I was amazed when I was there, the efficiency. They said to get there a little early, I got there 30 minutes early and they were waiting on me. That, you know, you read about, you see on the news, these lines are stagnant, they're not moving, not ours. They were moving, and I heard no complaints. That was a great job, great job.
And they've already sent out the schedule for our next shot, two weeks away, so, which I thought was great.
Okay, is that all you got?
No, I got just a few more, Dr. Burrow. One thing I'd like to say is thanks to the Board of Education. The raise that you approved last month has been going out on the checks, so the teachers and all the staff should now that this week has come about, receive their raise, and it will also retroactive to January 1st, so I really want to thank you all for doing that. Our staff deserves, they deserve a lot more, but that kind of shows them that we all do appreciate them. The other thing is, we will be looking at a meeting on April the 5th, and we're gonna see about our policies and our procedures for COVID, and if we want to do some changes in them. As you know, a few weeks ago, we stopped doing temperatures at schools, and we've had a lot of good success with that. We can't see any upticks in students coming in with fevers and everything, and that goes to the help of our parents. Our parents have done a fantastic job this year of helping make sure that if a student is sick or if they did get, they were kind of a close contact to keep them home and let our nurses know. Again, it comes right back to when you have professional people in places and they can focus on that one job, and the nurses have done an amazing job in our schools, it really helps. I don't see how a school system would have got through this year even partway without not having a nurse in every school, so I want to thank you for that. The other thing is, we have submitted the SIR funds, the 2.0 that you all approved, the kind of the buckets that they went into, we'll be seeing how they come back and if we'll have to tweak that and everything. They, the president did sign, I think today, the SIR 3.0, and we will be getting some information on that in the next few weeks, and I'll be sending it out to you when we get some of those things. And there's some of it that, there's part of that has to be used for learning loss, and then another part, we'll have to see what those is, and I'm hoping that a lot of that can be used for construction and maintenance, because I think that's where, because it has to be spent in such a fast time, within two months, I mean, two months, two years, so we'll see where that is, but I'll let you know on that. The other thing, just to talk about, you approved the city of Clinton and the football field, just kind of give you an update on that. Mr. McCamey, he has met with CUB, and I did not know that there is a sewer line that runs under that field, and it, about five or six years ago or something, they really needed to fix it then, and now's the prime opportunity to fix it, so he's been in touch with CUB and we're working with them, so we're gonna get that taken care of before we do all the work on the field. With that, we reached out to the University of Tennessee. They are not going to allow, they would allow us to use the arena, but we couldn't have any more, we couldn't have any more people in there than they let for a ballgame, and I think it's about 500, and that wouldn't do us any good at all. So what we're looking at doing is going to rent or lease some kind of preliminary, lease some bleachers and put them around the track at Clinton High School, so we can still have it outside, we can use that football field, and that way we'll have enough room to do it, so that's kind of where we're at. I don't know if we've said that out publicly or not, but we just didn't, we thought we could get the field done, and we might. If we get the field done, then we'll have it on that field, but we wanted, we didn't want to wait two weeks before graduation and not have a place to go, so I think that's the best thing to try to get through this year and trying to get that field. We don't want to rush that project.
That's just two months away.
Exactly right, yep. So in doing that, we have looked, we're working on a company to contract with to put the turf down, and Marcus is working with that, and we should know next week if we need to bid it, or they, there's another place out there, you can buy off another contract, so that's kind of where we're at with that.
I think that's one of the most wonderful things to have their graduation at their own school. I agree with Teresa too on that, that having it at your school is just good.
We just hope once we have it there, if it's not, if it does a good job, they may not want to come back over here to the football field, they may want to stay on that, because we think we can come out of the new complex and come on onto the field and some things like that, so there's a, I am amazed when all the great things are going on in Anderson County schools. We have, you all have, and as part of the leaders of this school system, y'all run an amazing school system, and the county and the teachers and the parents should be so appreciative, because, and they do, they talk about how great things are here, so kudos to you all and for the long-range vision that you all give for us to go through, and that's all I have, Dr. Burrow.
I passed behind Clinton High School today, and I noticed the old Patterson Building is coming down.
The old Patterson Building is coming down.
Yeah, Clay, thank you for getting that taken care of. I know the softball parents are so excited to see reality coming to fruition, so.
Committee reports. Budget Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Committee met Monday night and approved the following appropriations. 1A is appropriate funds for the Clinton High School track resurfacing and roof maintenance at Norris Elementary, Anderson County High School, the Maintenance Operations Building, and Bryceville Elementary School. That's $715,000. The breakdown there is about $215,000 for the track and $500,000 for the roofs. 2, what's that? Oh, 2B is to appropriate funds to reimburse costs for the COVID vaccine clinic, that's $2,500. 2C is to appropriate funds for student service office equipment, $2,500. 1D is to appropriate funds for network infrastructure upgrades as part of the Remote Technology Grant, $286,960.19. 1E is to appropriate funds for U Trust Employment Recognition, $100, that's for the Head Start. Those appropriations were all approved by the Budget Committee and sent to the full board for approval, and I so move.
Second.
Moving second approval of appropriations, 1A through 1E, roll call vote.
Mr. Bale?
Aye.
Mr. Cantrell? I lost him.
He lost him.
He lost him. Mr. Gillen Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Langenberg?
Aye.
Mr. McCamey?
Aye.
Ms. Portwood?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Burrow?
Aye. Motion base.
Motion base.
The transfers, item 2A is transfer funds for salary and benefits for Transportation Secretary, $11,315. This is an adjustment, not a pay increase, we'll be clear about that. 2B is to transfer funds for Title 1A, French Benefits and Equivments, $1,181.20. Item 2C is transfer funds for the lottery after-school program, $9,367.62. 1D is to transfer funds to correct previous budget amendment from the Carl Perkins Grant, Item 2E is to transfer funds for the Gear Up program for the Dual Enrollment Program, 2F is to transfer funds for COVID-related expenditures for the early Head Start, that's Those items were all approved by the Budget Committee and sent to the full board for approval, and I move for approval transfers 2A through 2F.
Second.
Move then second approval of transfers 2A through 2F, discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is the Head Start budgets. We have those, those are.
Sorry. End of that or not?
The, well, I'll just read those, then. Head Start budget, $2,532,523. The early Head Start budget, $1,454,827. The technical and training assistant budget, $28,881. And the U.S. Department of Agriculture budget, $117,800. Those are all approved by the Budget Committee and sent to the full board, and I move for approval.
Second.
Move second approval of Head Start budgets, 141, 143, discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
That is all from Budget Committee.
Policy Committee.
Policy, Policy Committee is gonna be, reports very short. We had two policies for review. We had 1.700 school district goals, and we had 5.100 personnel goals. After some discussion, we determined to table these policies for review by the Board Attorney, and the committee made this recommendation, and I so move.
We, if I can, we have made copies of those, and we have sent those to our Board Attorney to look at, along with the new rule and law, the new policy that went into effect with Tennessee School Board, so we've sent that to him, and we'll be getting back with him shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, it's referred to.
The Board Attorney?
Yeah.
Do we need to muck vote on it?
No, there's no action from the committee, we don't need to do anything until the committee.
Okay.
Unless somebody just wants to.
The committee made the motion to table it.
Right, so it's still in committee, so we don't need to take action unless somebody wants to put it on the table and vote. I don't think anybody wants to do that.
That it, Joe?
That's it.
Curriculum Committee.
Curriculum Committee met to discuss the criteria for the Board of Education's scholarship, or not huge scholarship. We talked about a number of things, but in the end, a motion made, applies to, we send this back to Dr. Barrett and staff to evaluate those things and bring them back to the committee at a later date. If we need a motion, I so move.
Do we need a motion?
Okay.
We don't, if we didn't take action.
We did not return to the board.
Same as other.
And I've been working on that this week. We've got some preliminary things together, and what we're going to do is, is we're going to look at, I think the best way to do that is, we really don't need another form, I think if you all will figure out how much we want to put for each item, say like if they are a employee's child. say like if they are a employee's child, then we give them 10 points. So there's like four or five of them. What we can do is, we can go ahead and we can pre, we can pre-look through them and sort them and say, okay, here are the ones that have these scores that will do. And then we can give the, you know, you'll get that down to probably five or 10, and then we can give them to you to look at the, all of the other things they're wanting to do. I think it'll work good that way.
But we don't need to do that before next
No, I think this will, this will be for next year because the scholarships are already, we've already started receiving them for this year, so.
That's all we had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Andy. Transportation.
Is that Dale?
That is Dale.
Will you read it?
Yeah.
Let me read it.
If you want.
You're on there.
Do you have it?
Casey, you're on it.
You're on it.
What?
You're on the committee.
You're on the committee, you can read it.
Okay. A motion by Dawn Bell and seconded by Joe Williams to extend the current transportation contracts through 2021-22 school year. I so move. Second.
Moving second, we extend the contracts through the 21, 21, 2022 school year, discussion. If done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Personnel committee.
Okay, Personnel Committee met Monday night. I was not here due to work engagement, but if you want me to go through each category, I can. But the overall score for Dr. Barrett out of 100 was 99.67 on his evaluation. The running average was 2.99. And the motion was made and seconded by Dawn Bell to accept the evaluation, and I so move for us to do that. Second.
Moving second that we accept the evaluation, Dr. Barrett. You're good for another year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Should've said that to the vote.
We will talk later about extending his contract at another meeting, but
I'm expecting to get that $13 million.
And see what he does with it.
You all are gonna tell me what to do with it.
That's all I have.
Okay. Action items. Approval of the Delegate 21-22 continuation grant year, discussion.
You want me to do that? You want me to do that, give that report?
I'm sorry?
Do you want me to give that report?
Or do we need to report?
No, we discussed this at our committee meeting Monday night. This is like a $3 million, five-year continuation grant, and we're in the second year. And it's for the delegate and their own program. And the Policy Council has already approved this, and I make a motion that we approve.
This is, this is for, I think we have to do it separately.
It won't let, it won't let me preview no more, it won't let me load no more pages. That's all the pages you get tonight.
This grant is all combined in one. It's not two separate grants, it's one, it's one grant. The delegate grant is included in that one.
This is approval of the delegate
Yes.
Continuation.
Shelby?
This is the delegate, and then you also have the grantee.
I think we have to vote on them separately, though.
Yeah. You gotta vote on the delegate and the grantee separately.
It was written in the same, it was in the same document.
I'm sorry, I thought it's two, the reason we have to send it to two documents is they're large and they won't transport to Pam. But it doesn't hurt to vote on them separately, because they both have to be approved or extended. Sorry, the heat is actually running like here.
Oh, I got it. There they are.
There it is.
There they are.
Okay, I'll make my first motion then, to approve the Delegate 21-22 continuation grant.
Second.
Move second approval of the Delegate 21-22 continuation grant, discussion. If done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
Now, I will make a motion to approve the grantees, 21
I think they have to be separate.
Yeah.
Yeah. 22-22 continuation grant year. And the Technical and Training Assistant Plan.
Second. Was that a second?
Yep, Dawn, Dawn second.
Moving second, we approve the grantee 21-22 continuation grant year and 21-22 Training and Technical Assistant Plan, discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. That's all we have under action items.
All good, I guess.
I got some.
Do we have anything from the board?
Let's adjourn.
If we don't, we adjourn.
Hi, Kenny.